Madam Town Clerk, if you could read the call first.
Town of Eastlime. Notice of Hybrid Annual Town Meeting. Notice is hereby given of the annual town meeting to be held on Monday, May 3, 2021, at the Eastlime High School Auditorium, 30 Chesterfield Road, Eastlime, at 7:00 p.m. In accordance with the Governor's executive orders due to COVID-19, the meeting will be a hybrid meeting to be held via Zoom and in person. Those qualified to vote at a town meeting have the option to attend and vote in person. And those attending via Zoom may vote with a show of hands. The following items will be acted upon. One, to review and discuss the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, as recommended by the Board of Finance. A, in accordance with Chapter 7.3 of the Town Charter, the moderator shall adjourn the annual budget meeting to a referendum on the voting machines. The budget resolution will be submitted to the persons qualified to vote in a town meeting by referendum by machine vote, which referendum shall take place on May 19, 2021, at the Eastlime Community Center from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Two, to adopt a 10-year capital plan. Three, special appropriation, $44,475, 2021 Nuclear Safety Emergency Preparedness, NSEP, grant. Four. We come before the meeting. The Zoom link will be posted on the Town of Eastlime's website five days before the meeting, dated at Eastlime, Connecticut, the 21st day of April, 2021. And this was published in the day newspaper and recorded in the Town Clerk's office and posted on the signpost.
Thanks, Madam Town Clerk. Announcing ground rules. Is that echo bothering anybody? If we could just get that fixed, we're going to hang on for a second. All right, can you hear me now? Is there an echo? And can people hear me on the Zoom? Okay.
I can hear you.
As usual, I'll go over the ground rules for a town meeting. On the Connecticut General Statute 7-6, you must be an elector of the town or 18 years of age, a U.S. citizen, and own taxable property of $1,000 or more on the grand list of 10, 1, 20. And the Connecticut General Statute 9-360, any person not eligible or qualified to vote but does vote may be subject to a fine of not less than $200, no more than $500, imprisoned for not less than one year, no more than two years, be disenfranchised, or all of the above. Appointing the registrars to be tellers and checkers this evening. And they're seated over there. If you are vaccinated and wish to speak at the meeting, you can remove your mask when you come up to the podium. When you come to the podium, please give your name and address for the record. If you're in the Zoom meeting, you must give your name and address for the record also. And I'm asking anyone on Zoom to keep their microphone on mute unless you're recognized to speak. If you're not eligible to vote but wish to speak, you must make that fact known before you address the meeting. Please do not conduct dialogue amongst yourselves. Address all questions or remarks through the moderator. The budget has been automatically referred to referendum. The referendum will be held May 19 at the Eastlime Community Center from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So we will have no vote on the budget tonight, but we will have a general discussion for anyone's information about the budget. There will be a vote tonight on the 10-year capital capital plan and item number three, which is the NSEP grant. Okay, I'm going to open the floor for discussion on the budget. Anyone wishing to comment may come forward and comment. Mr. Siri.
That was their choice, not mine, as far as the wiping off. I'm Kevin Siri. I'm the Deputy First Selectman. Mr. Nickerson sadly is out of town due to a death in his family. So we all wish him and his family the best. If you go to the first slide, Grant. As Gene said, the budget referendum is on May 19 at 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Eastlime Community Center, 41 Society Road. Normally, the normally the town meeting is the second Monday in May. This is obviously the first. The Governor's order allowed us to do this. And it also allows us to give a little more time between this annual meeting and the referendum vote. It has to be, according to Town Charter, within 10 days. We're allowing it to be now basically 16 days. This will allow time for, if we go to the next slide, everyone who wishes to vote by absentee ballot the opportunity to do so. It's a no-excuse required absentee ballot. And they'll be available at the Town Clerk's office starting Wednesday morning. You can call and they can be mailed to you. Just make sure you have it mailed back in time, or you can go in, pick it up, and vote right there. There's no requirement to have a reason. And this gives people who are out of town or non-residents a chance to get in here or request it, get it mailed to them, and get them back in time. So those are just a couple of things I wanted to mention before we get into that. And all weekend, Grant Place, Pat Lennon, Jimmy Fernandez, and Offsite Christina Arachne's were working on this project to make it so it's available tonight to do the, make this presentation. We've seen at the federal level where they have tens of thousands of dollars and hours to produce a project, it have a glitch. So thank you, guys, for all you've done, and I think we all them are.
Mr. Newton, I understand you have some comments.
Good evening. I'm Tim Hagan. I'm the Eastlime Board of Eastlime, I'm the Chair of the Eastlime Board of Education. And I welcome everybody to our high school auditorium. Just one note, a couple of things I'd like to say is this is a fantastic week. This is the fourth week that our kids are back in school, five days a week. We have a lot of parents who are very happy. We have an incredible amount of students who are very happy. We have a faculty that's very happy. We have a superintendent who's standing right next to me, who is extremely happy. And our superintendent will give you some details on the proposed budget for the Board of Education. But I would just like to say, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, I'd like to thank everyone in the community of Eastlime for the tremendous support that you have provided us, our kids, for the past 14 months. It has not been an easy 14 months by any means. And we are so happy, especially with the investments you made for the computer technology to allow virtual learning to occur in a record, record time. It was just fantastic working with everybody to make that all happen. So appreciative. We are entering the recovery phase, and we don't know exactly what we're going to find. Hopefully, the challenges won't be too great. We're getting funding, and Jeff's going to talk about it, funding from the state through the federal government to help us catch back up. But I'm sure that we do need additional support in the future to help catch back up. The community of Eastlime will be right there to support us. So with that, I'll just turn the podium over to our Superintendent, Mr. Jeffrey Newton.
Thank you, Dr. Hagan. It's great to be back in this room and actually see some live faces. So we're excited about that. Hopefully, this is the beginning of getting us back to normalcy as it pertains to our budget meetings and all of our work together as a great town. Just a few slides that I wanted to share this evening on the budget, the Board of Ed side. And before I do that, I know Mr. Siri thanked our audio and our visual team. They did a phenomenal job. A lot of work and effort went into it. It might look easy, but this is a challenge to try and do a hybrid model. So kudos again to them and their efforts. Grant, next slide. Thanks. So just wanted to hit upon, you know, a lot of effort and a lot of work goes into the development of the Board of Education budget in collaboration between the Board of Ed, as well as our administrative staff, as well as some of the Board of Finance members and town representatives who joined us in the process. We hold workshops. We have a very collaborative approach to running our budget and formulating it each year. You can see, I won't read them, but those are the specific dates of the work that went into it. You know, starting, you know, really in, we started a little late this year. We started in December, typically start in November. So it's really, it's a coming together and a lot of work and a lot of collaboration to make sure we're bringing forth the best and responsible budget. Next slide, please. And Dr. Hagan, you know, mentioned, you know, the thank you on the tech side of devices in the hands of every student and every staff member this year, and did that before December 15. That was a huge undertaking. And we owe that to the town, and we owe that to the Board of Finance, the First Selectman, and the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Ed for their efforts in allowing us to obtain that funding to do that and make sure our kids were prepared for remote learning. So kudos to everyone for supporting that venture. You know, it's a couple of district achievements that we've had this year. It's been a very challenging year. We started off in the hybrid model, and we had a positive reopening. A lot of, you know, feedback back and forth, whether, you know, hybrid was good for some, worked well for some, didn't work well for others. But we remained in the hybrid model for the safety of all. We developed a virtual Viking program for our elementary students who were Zooming and our other students who were Zooming in from home. We had success with that. We also co-horted over 1,758 students, moving them back and forth between, whether if a parent wanted to be virtual or a parent wanted to be on-site, we went back and forth over 1,700 times all throughout the course of this year. So some great success and effort went into that. Our extended school year programming last summer, we had such unknown, but we ran a great onsite summer school program for our students. We're going to do the same thing this summer and even more robust with intervention work for students. And also, you know, we had to, with putting devices in the hands of every student and our staff members, we needed to develop a distance learning help desk, extremely successful in supporting our parents. We had over 300 hits to that and helping folks at home. Because parents, this was new to parents as well, and grandparents who were overseeing and working with their kids. Next slide. I will read all of these, but you know, as we talk and think about next year, we have to look at five core areas, you know, the achievement gaps that have grown and have occurred this year, identifying those, rectifying those. That's our recovery and reimagining efforts. SCL, support that social and emotional learning. We've had students that have been disconnected, disengaged. We need to reengage them. We need to support them and support staff. Blended learning, it's that work of continuing to use devices, asynchronous and synchronous work. We have these devices. They're not going to go back on the shelves now once we're done with COVID. Kids need to keep using them. So making sure we continue with a blended learning environment for our students, maintaining appropriate class size to make sure we can intervene appropriately with kids, and really establishing a new baseline to allow us to work moving forward to see where areas and gaps may or may not be and how we will address them. Just a bar chart of where we started out of the gate with our preliminary budget at the very beginning, back in November, December timeframe, 2.63. We kind of rode the wave with all of our meetings, discussions, cuts, additions. And ironically, we ended up with a Board of Finance-approved budget of 2.63, about $30 off from where it originally was when we started the process. So that's where the Board of Ed budget is, $52,002,094.64 as it pertains to next year. We did utilize some of the federally funded, the dollars that are coming down, 431,916 of those planned monies. The allocation of funding that's coming to us is helping to offset to get us down to that 2.63%. That's what we're using that money. Those items were originally in the operating budget. We reduced the operating budget by utilizing those American Rescue dollars. We've had a great relationship again with the Board of Finance, a lot of great work. Feel very transparent in the work that we've done. We gave back about a half a million dollars at the end of last year to the town, and we'll see where we are at the end of this year, potentially giving some dollars back as well, but that's to be determined. We do have some COVID costs and expenses too that we're addressing. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. I understand. Ms. Alberti would like to relax.
Okay. Mr. Cushman. Good evening, everyone. I'm Camille Alberti. I am the Board of Finance Chair. And on the next slide, I'd just like to give some recognition to my fellow board members, Aunt Chakalo, who is joining us via Zoom this evening. We have John Birmingham in the front seat, Peter DeRosa, Anne Santoro, and Richard Steele. The second year our team has been together, and I think that it really made the process a lot smoother since we're also well-versed in what the true budget process is, which I'll talk a little bit about on this slide. The months that the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen were working on prior to us receiving it, you know, we know that that was several months of work before we even received the budget on March 10. We began listening to budget presentations with the Board of Education first on April 8. And as Mr. Newton had already mentioned, it came to us, the Board of Education budget came to us with a sidebar note saying that they had actually found an additional $432,000 in potential savings. The week after that, we began with our general government and our capital budget presentations. So each of the department heads came before us and presented their budgets to us, and that gave us an opportunity to delve into some of the details and ask a lot of really pointed questions. Then on April 21, we began our budget deliberations. This is the meeting where the board comes together and starts to make actual decisions about the budget and what we'd like to move forward to the town. Because it was our second year working together, we were actually able to reach consensus in one evening, which is really, even though it was a five-hour meeting, it was only one, and there have been years past where it's taken several meetings. So we were very, I was very proud of that. I think my fellow board members probably felt relieved as well. At the end of the night, we decided to propose a budget to move one forward of $77,000, almost $995,000. This represents an overall budget increase from last year of 2.37%. What this means for us is an estimated, and I say estimated, that's a bold, 0.15 increase. On April 26, we heard, we held a public hearing on the town budget. I think if you remember, a few years ago, there are probably 300, 400 people in the middle school auditorium. I think with the Zoom meetings, we probably disenfranchised some of our town people. So we're really looking forward to getting back and doing this in person again. That evening, right after the public hearing, we listened to some input from the town people. Not very many speakers, but we did listen to who came before us. And we held a special meeting after the public hearing where we deliberated a little bit more on that budget that we had come up with. And the result of that special meeting was, and I don't want to get too technical here, but we did revise the fund balance revenue down from $900,000 to $307,000. That's a revenue source coming from our savings account, our rainy day fund account, whatever you want to call it. It is money that we earmark from our fund balance to kind of close a gap in our budget every year. And so we were able to significantly reduce that. And I'll show you how we did that later on in the presentation. But basically, it was a result of 11th-hour state revenue projections that came in. Also, that evening, we restored a $3,090 expense reduction that we had made to the Brookside Farm Museum. So that was very important to the Brookside Farm Museum. This was for wages for a curator. And why do I bring this up? It may seem insignificant to many of you, given the size of the dollar amount, but it's significant in the fact that advocacy matters. So if people are listening to the budget and they follow along with the process, and they don't like something that we're doing, they have many opportunities to come forward and say, we disagree with you. Here's why. Here's what we would like you to consider doing differently. So the net effect of all of our decisions that evening at the special meeting after the public hearing had a zero effect on our budget. And that was a big goal that we had, that we did, that we did achieve. Tonight, of course, is the annual budget meeting. And as Mr. Siri pointed out, we will go to referendum on May 19. You have the option to vote in person or get the absentee ballot from the Town Clerk's office. And once that budget passes, if it passes, then we expect to come together as a board again and set the mill rate on May 26. If we set the mill rate that evening, then that will be what you will see reflected in your property tax bills starting with July 1, the new fiscal year. Next slide, please. These are just, this is not a complete list by any means, but I just wanted to point out some of the bigger ticket items of the capital projects and acquisitions that we're doing this year, starting with the continuation of technology upgrades. Mr. Newton mentioned how we all came together as a town, made sure that we got a device in the hand of every single student. And that was critically important with the distance learning. But as we all know, technology ages. There's a useful life of devices. And so this money sort of starts to replace some of the oldest models that we have in the school district. Continuing with the Board of Ed, there's some roof light extensions and HVAC upgrades that need to be made to the high school as well as the middle school. Moving on to Public Works, you'll see that we have town road infrastructure costs this year of $850,000. This was pretty much the standard that we had been designating for years. But last year, because of COVID and trying to try to minimize the tax increase to the townspeople because there was no budget referendum last year, Mr. Berga said that he would be able to drop this down to 500 last year. So we're simply, this is not a huge increase. It may seem like it, but this is really what the standard has been in the years leading up to the pandemic. And then next, we have a trash truck and a dump truck that needs to be replaced. Finally, for the Niantic Fire Department, they have an engine truck that is about 29 years old, and this finally needs to be replaced. So on the next slide, I talk about services. The previous slide was capital. Now we're going to talk about services. Again, this is not comprehensive, but based on the conversations that were taking place during our meetings, these are kind of the things that I thought people would be most interested in hearing about. Starting with the Eastlime Police Department, we are adding an additional officer this year. The plan that the Police Commission had come up with, as you know, was two police officers per year for the next six years. And we opted to take a slower approach and reach sort of a compromise. So we are adding one. Our staff goes from 25 and a half to 26.5 FTEs for the police. The Building Department, we did increase the hours for the part-time building officials. This should alleviate the burden to the building official himself and help to expedite some of the permits and other processes that go on in that department. Right next door, in Town Hall in the basement, the Wetlands Officer Works. And this year, we approved, after about at least eight or nine years of him requesting some extra help, we approved some extra help for the Wetlands Officer, primarily to deal with the increased activity due to new regulations that the town put into place. And finally, with the Board of Education, increase human resources, such as teachers, paraprofessionals, math coaches, and social, emotional professionals. Again, how did we get to hire all of those resources with such a minimal budget increase? As we mentioned several times already, the Board of Ed chose to use some of the grants that they had from their Esser funds to fund some of these positions in the next budget year. On the next slide, this is the slide that I but I added this slide, which I did not have at the public hearing based on some conversations that we had. And basically, it shows how the revenues that we're receiving from Hartford are changing. You'll see in the very first line item, our education cost sharing amount is going to go down for the upcoming fiscal year, '21, '22. Town aid, road assistance stays the same. Pilot state-owned property, pilot hospitals and colleges going away. So you'll see that those are reduced. I think probably most of you know, state-owned property in our town include things like the National Guard properties that we have, Rocky Neck State Park and the prison, those types of properties that we have in town that are owned by the state that are tax-exempt. Pilot hospitals and colleges. I believe that one time that might have been the Outdoor Yale Education Center. So that's going away. The Pequot Grant, that's our share. Municipal Stabilization Grant, this is something that came to be a couple of years ago as we started to lose money, you know, for road reconstruction from Hartford. They put in the stabilization grant to help us, you know, start, I guess, wean us off of some Hartford dollars. But these, some of these hits were pretty drastic to some municipalities, not to us. I think that you'll see that it actually works out in our favor this year. This new tiered pilot grant is going to bring in over a million new dollars this year. And that's how we were able at the 11th, that's how we were able at the 11th hour to reduce the amount that we were going to withdraw from our rainy day fund from $900 down to $307,000. And so that's how we have a net zero effect on our bottom line. Next slide. So how do these numbers compare with the current fiscal year that we're in? We see that the total general government went up 2.81%. Education, 2.63. Debt service has actually gone down a little bit. That's because of a favorable interest rate environment that we find ourselves in. And then lastly, the capital outlay is up 5%, but that is a very, if you take the capital outlay as a percentage to our total budget, it represents less than 1% of the budget. So to see a 5% increase is not too alarming. And then the mill rate. This is again what we project at this point, 0.15. I would hope that the town is as pleased as I am for the second year in a row to keep the mill rate increase so low while maintaining many services in town and doing everything we can to help, I guess, help our children recover learning losses that were probably experienced over this past year due to the pandemic. So for two years in a row, we have kept that mill rate increase pretty low. Last year was 0.17. This year, we believe it will be 0.15. And the last slide that I always talk about, or anybody on the Board of Finance likes to talk about, we refer to it as, okay, what is this going to cost me? How's that budget going to affect my bottom line? And so we always come up with a few scenarios about, well, if your house is assessed at these different values in blue, I've given you what your estimated taxes will be based on this budget. That's the first line. So if your home's assessed at $250,000, this budget will give you a tax bill of $7,128 next year. This year, you're paying $7,090, a difference of $38 per year, or $3.13 per month. or $3.13 per month. And then you can, you can read the other two examples and try to figure out what your situation is. This is the budget that will, the town will be voting on on May 19. As many of us speakers have already said, I really believe the whole town has come together to produce such a fine budget. I hope that you will join me in the Board of Finance in approving this budget. And we look forward to a really productive year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alberti. Is there anyone else who wish to comment on the budget? Seeing no hands, and we're going to move. Let me check the Zoom. I do see a Zoom hand, Mr. Mango. Can we have Mr. Mango? He seems to be talking, but he's on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I just, there are a couple of comments I'd like to make. I'm very, very disappointed that the police officer, second police officer, was kept out of the budget. The roads in East Line are kamikaze mix. The speeders, the pass on the right, it's, it's getting dangerous to drive in East Line. And the second issue is a part-time wetland officer. I'm a state-certified wetland officer. He needs more than a part-time. He needs a full-time assistant. Because of what the Wetland Commission did, changing the the parameters for, for the upland review area, it's, it's practically going to be a full-time job for an assistant. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mango. Can we turn that off? Would anyone else like to make any comment? Yes, or Mr. Dagle?
Paul Dagle, Five Riverhead, Laney Slime, member of the Board of Selectmen. First of all, as stated earlier, I'd like to thank the many staff members, town staff, administration at the high school, the Board of Education, the Board of Selectmen. And last but not least, the board that has the toughest job is the Board of Finance. Because they, they get to make the tough choices when it comes to balancing what, what the town needs, what the towns ask for, and what we're going to ask the taxpayers to pay for. And I, and I want to let you know that I, I support this budget. And I believe all the members of the Board of Selectmen support this budget as well. And we hope that the residents of the town at the referendum support it. I do want to make one comment regarding a procedural item that the Board of Finance spent a lot of time on. And that was whether to increase the police force by, by two officers or by one. And they couldn't come to an agreement. It was split opinions on whether it was needed or not. And I commend them for compromising, because compromising is one of the ways to get to a solution that helps us where we want to go. The point I want to make is the Board of Finance, when they first approved their budget, made a decision to apply $900,000 from the unallocated fund to reduce the amount of taxes we'd have to pay with an increased mill rate, which is a practice that the Board has used. I believe last year's number was about 900,000 as well. And in the past, it's, it's varied a couple hundred, four, 500,000. And it's, it's their attempt because to take money that, that we've been able to save over the years and offset the increase in budget, so the taxpayers don't have to feel the full burden of that increase in budget. And then as Ms. Alberti stated at the last minute, we found out what the state was going to provide us, that's $600,000, roughly 592. Again, there was a, a motion by the Board of Finance to, to use some of that money to, to reinstate the second officer. The Board of Finance had a split decision. And my point here procedurally is the Board of Finance's responsibility to the town is to decide if we can afford to do something that the policymakers of the town think we need, both the Board of Education, the Board of Selectmen, and so on. And in this case, they were willing to to spend, take that $900,000 and put it in the budget. And then they made a decision when the extra revenue was there, to reduce that amount. That is not a wrong decision. All right, that is not a wrong decision. It's a decision that I don't personally agree with, and I believe other members of the Board of Selectmen do not. We feel that there is a need. And when it comes to policy, and I don't think this was the intention of the Board of Finance, but we had opinions that didn't think it was needed. Comments made in the public hearing that it's not prudent, that we've already spent enough money for training, mandated training as it is. So going forward, I'd like that to be considered. What can the taxpayers afford? How can we minimize it to the greatest extent possible, either from what we ask for or what we eventually approve? And let's let the policymakers of the town identify what we need. And then let's figure out how we can minimize what we pass on. So finally, once again, I said last but not least, but to the Board of Finance, you, I think, have the toughest job of all the boards. And I want to thank you for the effort you put in with Zoom meetings, not sitting in, in public. And I hope, once again, that all the residents of East Line support this proposed budget at referendum. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, or in the back? Mr. Schultz on the red mask? Mr. Schultz? It's okay. You can use it.
Mike Schultz, Loversland, East Slime. First, I'd like to thank the Board, especially Board of Finance and other Board of Policemen that are uncomplicated for all the work that is done for the town. Last, last year's budget, the mill rate increase was terrific. This year is also terrific. When we talk about what the town for, I think that, now, I would like to have more police officers running around the neighborhood. I've got all kinds of places I could, I could ask to go. But some of us in this town, being the older generation, are facing huge increases in our, our insurance costs and for both vehicles, car, home. And also even more, huge medical costs. I'm not charging $30,000 per year. That's big money. So a 0.51 mill increase is, that's terrific. If you're expecting an increase that were out to, or so, I think that's really unfortunate. So we have to, please, keep in mind that, as you have been doing, considering what the cost is to the town. And all in, you know, in general. We've got a, how many percent of the people in supporting the education system, where only 20% of the population of is, is has to. The other, the other part is helping to support that with our, with our tasks. But let's, I mean, let's not go crazy with many other avenues that the education wants. I think they did a terrific job this year, is what we've done. And so, I think, thank the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Would anyone else like to be heard? I don't see anyone on the Zoom raising their hand. I don't see any hands. So the matter of the budget is going to go to referendum on May 19, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. We don't take any further action tonight on that item. We're going to move to the second item on the agenda, which is to adopt the 10-year capital plan. And I'll introduce, I'll entertain a resolution on that matter. Mr. Siri.
Thank you, Jane. We got the next slide up for the capital improvement. Oh, we need to do that first. Okay. You want to do that? I would do ask for that.
Mr. Siri, I assume you were going to make a motion to accept approval?
So will.
And is there a second? Mr. Hagan? Now you may talk.
Thank you. Just real quickly to go through the 10-year capital thing. Next slide, please. It's a 10-year capital plan. It's a long five-page document. So we're only highlighting on this the things that will be actually in the budget for 21, 22. Everything, the nine years after that are things that are basically identified as needs for the town moving ahead. That's basically a moving target. That changes a lot from time to time. So this is all that will be in next year's budget. Townwide computer equipment, there's $10,000. And the fund, the first column, which is town-funded, as you see there, the $10,000 for that. Niantic Fire Department assorted hoses, scuba cylinders, turnout gear. And then it should be a flanted fire department for the cylinders, turnout gear, and fire hoses. Just a little bit typo there. All those funds in there are in the budget. They won't go through any further appropriation once approved here. And hopefully, the budget is approved. Reason for this is with the fire hose, they do fail. They're tested yearly. And if they fail, we want to have the resources there to make sure we can replace them. Don't always have to use all that money, but frequently we do. Same thing with the cylinders for the scuba equipment, the self-contained breathing apparatus that our firefighters need if they go into a building where there's smoke or fire. We used to wait and replace them all at once, much higher figure. Now we're doing it on a more regular basis. The same thing with turnout gear. Turnout gear only lasts so many years. When you have fires, you go, when it does degrade the equipment, you need to replace it. So that's what that is there for. As Ms. Alberta pointed out, moving over to the bonds and notes level column, we have $680,000 for a new fire pumper at Niantic Fire Department. The one it's replacing is a 1991 pumper. So it was the same year I was born is when they purchased that. They did that. And Chief Barone pointed out to me today that that was actually given to the town, purchased by the town for 250,000, or given to the town when they enhanced the prison and gates and so forth in York several years ago for $250,000. The $850,000, Ms. Alberta pointed out, it's a little more than last year, but actually, it's going down as time goes on. We used to put a little bit more in there, but by maintaining our roads, we don't have to ask for as much. So it's an increase over last year, but we're slowly getting that down. And then the CIP for Board of Ed, if there's any questions to that, that'd be for Jeff Newton or Mariana to refer to. Moving over to the next, that all, everything, no, back, that we stay on this one. Aftertown thing, the bonds and notes, capital, nonrecurring, CNRE, low SIP, CNRE Resources, and acquisition. They all have to go through another approval. We approve it tonight, gets approved at referendum, we hope. But then it has to go again through the Board of, Selectmen Board of Finance for approval and possibly a town meeting before it's actually expended. So moving on, the revaluation, we put a little bit of money away every year just so that when we do our revaluation for, at the assessor's office, we don't have to come up with a big $200,000. We put a little away each year to make sure that it's not a big hit to the budget. And townwide replacement of servers, Ccat software, again, these are all things that are just normally things that need to be done. HVAC, HVAC pump replacement townwide. Here again, HVAC systems fail. Rather than have to come up with a big money, we put a little away every year. And Board of Finance has been really good at supporting this. Board of Selectmen are making sure to do it. Because we caught, years ago, we got caught for not having enough maintenance and maintenance money in our accounts. East Line Water for Boat, that's for a new engine for the boat that we share with Waterford, the police boat. They provide gas and some other things. In the mooring, we provide the engine. And that's half the cost, I believe. I think water for kids in there. $10,000 away for town-wide sidewalks. Here again, we have an account. We use that to repair sidewalks. And let's hope that at some point in time, we can start extending them. Moving over to CNRE low SIP, we have townwide parking lot reseals. That's one that'll be used to reseal some of our townwide parking lots. Town-owned bridge and covert repairs for the dams. We need to do this. We have three dams in town. All of them are in need of repair. In fact, we're even talked about maybe including that in some of the American Relief Rescue Plan money. They need to be done. You definitely don't want any of our dams failing, because that could be catastrophic to some people that would live downstream. And town-owned, and then moving on to the next one, the CNRE Resources Knox Box upgrades. Basically, if a fire department goes to an apartment building or building at night or something like that, and they need to go in, the dispatch center can trigger a release of a box which pops open. They can take a key and gain entry. We have more and more apartment complexes in town. We have companies, Costco and that. This allows them to get outside without waiting for someone to have to come and get them. Especially at the apartments, if someone's ill, they have a way to get in. Ours are old. They aren't working as well. We need more. The Fire Marshal identified this as a serious need, so that's why it's in there. The last one is the acquisition. As you can see, we have microwave links communications. I talked to the police chief. Chief said, this is to replace outdated equipment on two of our older towers, communications equipment. We have the new tower up by Mossway Road, but the other ones, the equipment just needs to be replaced. It's getting old. And moving down, police vehicles, the 81,000. That comes out of an account that the police department or money is generated through when the police work road jobs, overtime. There's a cost that the companies are billed for our police cars. So the money comes out of that. We have to appropriate it. But it's not coming out of the taxpayers' fund. That's coming out of money we receive when the, our officers work the overtime jobs, such as you've seen them up on Niantic, on the Niantic River Bridge. You've seen them at the Four Corners. You've seen them pretty much all over town. Does not include if we're standing behind or there's a fire and someone has to work overtime. We don't build, they don't build a town for any of that. Moving down, Public Works Trash and Dump Truck, Mr. Burgaw, here, I talked to him. This is replacing a 2009 spare garbage truck, which is way past its lifetime, and a 2009 dump truck. So they've gotten 12-plus years out of these vehicles. They need to be done. And this is an acquisition. The note is over a five-year period, 60 months. So it's not the full amount all coming out at once. Public parking wreck pickup truck with a snowplow attachment. It's the one vehicle. Dave Howell's vehicle is replacing. 2007, so another, an older vehicle. And these are the vehicles that we get rid of, eventually go up for auction, and we do get some money, which we do generate a little bit of revenue. And the last one is Board of Ed Technology. They make sure the Board of Ed stays up to date with current technology. So that's pretty much the capital plan that will be impacting next year's of the 21, 22 budget. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Siri. Would anyone else like to be heard on this one? Seeing no hands. Seeing no hands, and we'll move the question. All in favor of adopting the 10-year capital improvement plan, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed by saying nay. Plan carries. Next item on the agenda is a special appropriation of $444,475, 2021 Nuclear Safety Emergency Preparedness Grant. Is there a motion to approve this appropriation? Mr. Dagle, is there a second? It's Mr. Siri. Would anyone like to be heard? Seeing no hands, no hands, and we'll move directly to a vote on this item. All those in favor of a special appropriation of $44,475, 2021 Nuclear Safety Emergency Preparedness Grant, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed by saying nay. The ayes have it. The resolution carries. There being no other items on the agenda, entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion to adjourn. Mr. Hagan, is there a second? The Senator, all in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Opposed by saying nay. Meeting is adjourned, is, it's adjourned to referendum on May nineteenth at the community center.